I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to their government, which is standing in recognition of their government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know it's hot here folks, the air conditioning, you've heard that, it's not working tonight. It's not like this. So just please bear with us, we apologize for the delay. A few housekeeping notes before I get going. When I identified that they have entrances here, exits on either side of the council chambers, there's a third, so we're gonna put stairs out the elevator. They have rooms which are by the back of these doors. I asked that folks silence their cell phones at this time. And if there's a need to have a conversation, you can take it to one of the conference rooms on either side of the council chambers. And as always, we ask that we respect the speakers. Introduction of board members, my name is Wayne Planchin, we're the chairman. We also have Vice Chairman Charles Malacco. We also have members Barry Joe Wilshere.
Matthew Gillis?
Matthew Gillis, J.D. Mills. And we also have Susan Hayner, who's our planning director, and Kyle Hayner, who's the assistant planner. Item number one on regular business is the open public speaking. We allocate fifteen minutes for this purpose. Folks, if you want, come on up to the podium. And speak about whatever on your mind, come on up. Doesn't necessarily have to do with what's on our planning agenda tonight. We're just asking you to state your name and address.
The address, fifty-six Beale Street. And I've lived there for twenty-six years. And everybody that comes to the neighborhood just except that I I sort of feel with this center that we're being invaded, that's what it feels like. But anyway, that's not why I'm here, I'm sure we can't do anything about it at this point. Other than the fact that I heard that there may be some blasting. And I'm here to tell you, my house is two hundred years old, almost every other house on that block is. And if there's gonna be any blasting, you better get some really, really good insurance because real laws do your houses, because you can't blast. They blasted three blocks away with the motel, and it's not happening to our houses. So, that's what I wanna say, I wanna make that record, that the blasting is something that you really have to focus on, it cannot be. Anyway, that's it, thank you very much.
Can you give a little bit of a leak, because it's It's hot, yeah. Can you describe your name, item number?
My partner Joanne Myer, that's M.Y.E.O.S.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi.
How are they?
My name is Susan Caparada, twenty-four Home Street, Austin, Austin, Houston. It's P. O. I. P. in the yard, in Zeno. And I've been there since two thousand and four. I'm concerned about the blasting as well, because I was here in the hotel blasting. My house was built in nineteen hundred, and there were some cracks, I mean, there was no major damage to it, but it was very disturbing. I work at home, I'm a writer, and it was really disturbing to have that all the time. But on top of that, there were cracks that occurred in my structure, nothing major. But I am concerned about this happening again. And I'm also I'd also like to just say that the part of the situation that's happened in two thousand and four has I definitely noticed a change. It used to be that it was only on weekends, you know, when there was something going on down the waterfront. I had to worry about parking near my house. Now it's gotten more and more frequent, and I am really concerned about that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hi there.
Hi there, I'm Hillary Hartley, twenty-sixth Beale Street, Houston. So on December ninth, twenty sixteen, the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission requested visibility studies from the Irish Cultural Center in a letter. The HLPC expressed particular concern for how the Ron Duff skyline featured its tourism and huge bathrooms or waterfront would both avoid the ICC in it. And that echoes our concerns. The site is centrally visible, the ICC proposes to be either in line with the West Strand Row nor the Beale Street Homes, which also run company Hill Path. And from what I can see, the current proposal rises over ninety-fourty-nine feet from a south elevation grade, which is seen as an accidental way, a new construction building for the R2 zone by twelve feet and half a story, not including the elevator accessible through the garden. So these visibility studies, which the HLPC requested, are needed to understand this proposal in context. That's why I wrote to the HLPC's regular meeting on June second, to ask if they can receive those studies and if the ICC would be returning to the commission for further review prior to this board's rendering of secret determination. I was told that the HLPC was unaware of the new materials posted on the ICU's website under Planning Project subsection Planning Board, and was directed to present the question to the planning to planning as the agency on the Irish Cultural Center's application. When I posed the question to the planning department, I was told that they denied the ministry, the HLPC, and I should pose the question back to the HLPC chair. Considering the confusion around this application's next step and the changes recently made to the project, which you will hear about at tonight, tonight from the applicant, I'd like to respectfully request that there be another public hearing for an open comment period on the amended proposal. As you probably recall, planning held the second public hearing on November fifth, twenty sixteen, after the ICC announced the changes in its maintenance design at the beginning of the first public hearing of October fifth, twenty sixteen, essentially holding two public hearings on one set of changes. As far as I can tell, this board will be including on whether or not to override the also founding planning board's recommendations, on whether or not to issue a funding favor for now forty-seven to the users on this same construction, as well as rendering a secret determination. Visibility studies requested by HLPC will be needed in advance so the boards and public have the opportunity to review and see if ICC could comfortably admit to the existing context of the historic Ron Duff district. And the public needs an opportunity to weigh in on the proposal, getting a little bit of awareness changes. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, item number? Thank you. Also, let the record be shared, that Robert Jacobson is here. And also, this is the court panel, so be in progress. Anybody else for the open public speaking?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Barbara Scott, and this is Sixth Street in Kingston. And I also wanted to hear the positive declaration on the secret. My concern is stormwater. And Kingston is, the creek, Ron Duff Creek is designated as a significant area by the Environmental, the State Environmental Commission. So, I know the plan shows that there is a stormwater system being put in place, but I would like some more detail on that, to be clear on how they're gonna handle that in the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tanya, Tanya Garnet, one zero two Worth Street. Also the ICC Center regarding the secret determination. They weren't very clear with their recent information regarding blasting. Basically reserving the right to blast, and the wording that they had. That's a very sensitive area, it's right on Company Hill path. I know that a couple of trees recently come down. New growth has not had a chance to resecure it, and that was affected. Across the street, there's a building that is at risk of falling down. And it recently lost a part of their building right across the street. On Beale Street, it's the apartment building that hasn't been, it's right next to a parking lot. And it recently, so it came down. And it's a historic neighborhood, so blasting, any damage that blasting would do to the old houses, this is even if they could be ready to be, or could be rebuilt, parts that would be damaged. It's old road wood and old materials, you can't just rebuild if there's a blow. So it's a situation where there needs to be more oversight. And getting a permit for blasting requires they can do very minimal things if you don't have a cause deck first. Cause deck would allow the city to have certain requirements before they blast. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to say something about the they want on Beale Street across from the Maritime Museum, the new
On East Street?
What?
On East Street?
On East Street, yeah, yeah. There's something on the agenda about the secret, and I didn't get a chance to inquire further about that, but I hope that you're really cautious about doing anything regarding secret for that, because as far as I understand, they haven't really gone through landmarks very much. They wanna show landmarks very much information. So to go forward with any secret determination, even just deciding on who would be responsible for secret information, I think is a little bit ahead of schedule, ahead of appropriate schedule. Thanks.
How are you?
Thank you very much. I'm around with this other gentleman. I'm Joseph Fallow, and I live at sixty-six Leamston, Kingston. And as you know, or maybe you don't have attended, basically all of these meetings. And I'm curious, is there a few questions? And maybe help me understand how they can be, how they can be done. First, I wonder if this meeting's I understand that the building is being moved to the West Strand. They're turning the building around to West Strand, is that so? At the meeting, last meeting of this cultural center, the way I understand it, that they are staying within the ordinances or rules of Beale Street. Now, I don't understand how they can move the building to West Strand and implement Beale Street rules to the building. Okay, I believe if they're moving the building to the West Strand, and they should be, they can have it both ways. They should be obligated to implement the rules upon the West Strand. It sounds logical to me. And secondly, I understand, I understand, they're trying to create a parking lot which is four hundred feet or better away from the cultural center. And this is another issue of urban space, or green areas, or runoff areas. Four hundred feet away from the building facility is an unreasonable business. Perhaps if it was adjacent to the property, and they wanted to do it, well, it sounds logical. But on another street, four hundred feet away, I don't think that that's a reasonable request or move. But what really concerns me is the, they can't have it both ways. And thank you. And I don't think that, if I were one to receive, he knows in the way into the commercial district. That's another question, that would be, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fallow. Anybody else? May I just unclose the open public speaking portion of the meeting? Go on to item number two, which is the adoption of the main date, twenty seventeen, twenty-four minutes. Everybody has a pad, I'm gonna give you two, take a look at them. Any questions, comments? All right, this time we'll make a motion that we adopt those minutes, we have a second. Second by Mary Joe Wilshere, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, being to public hearings, item number three is three hundred twenty-two, all the items. It's a special prepared rule for a three-room bed and breakfast. Section block five is forty-eight point three hundred eighteen dash one dash four. Secret determination zone R2, it's Ward two. Riley Jordan is the advocate owner. Is there anybody besides the advocate or owner wishing to speak on item number three? Oh, fuck. Steve, come on, how are you? Yeah, come right up here.
I'm good.
Yeah. Stay here. All right. Oh, that's all. How do you get? Good, give the station eight, go for the record, please.
My name is Bill Jordan.
This is Riley's brother, who says Riley.
Riley. Welcome.
Thank you. You know, I heard all those comments about, you know, first of all, I like this. It's a cool place.
Good. Thank you. All right, so, familiar with your brother's operation there, right?
Yes.
Any changes to the operational?
I don't know.
Any questions? Stand? Seems pretty straightforward, and we are bound by a one-year renewal. Questions from the west? East is good. All right. Under secret, it's a type two action, and therefore predetermined that no requirement of the facts, so no further review of the words required. This time we'll make a motion that we approve item number three for a period of one year with all original conditions carried forward, we have a second on that. Second by Mary Joe Wilshere, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay.
Thank you.
Enjoy the screening, sir.
Thank you. Case to man, yes.
Say hello to your brother, Forrest, wait.
Tell you what, come on, fine.
Okay, going on to item number four, two eighty-eight Wall Street. Special prepared rule for an apartment, section block five is forty-eight point three hundred thirty-one dash six dash twenty-one. Secret determination zone C2 to the Big Stew's Overlake District and Stocky Historic District. It's also the Heritage Area. Ward two, Brad Will is the advocate, that's the building property measures, LLC is the owner. Is there anybody in here? Anybody besides the advocate or owner wishing to speak on item number four? Unclose that, and welcome Brad Will to the microphone, good evening, sir. Good evening. All right. Any changes to this? No, okay. Good, this one. The most recent renewal was in June of twenty fifteen, and that was for two years. Two eighty-eight, I got you. No issues with building safety, I see, stand is good? Stand is good? West? East is good? All right. Under secret, this also is a type two action, and predetermined that no requirement of the facts, no further review of the words required. This time we'll make a motion that we approve item number four. We have a two years to make, well, because I could request the board to consider a longer term. And what is that? This is, this is, this is what we can't. Yeah, that's right. We can't do that. What, Adam? Robert, you wanna go for a long return? Okay. How long do you want to go?
Five.
Well, let's stick with two minutes. You wanna stick with two minutes? Okay. You want us to stick with two? Two minutes. So, make a motion that we approve item number four for a period of two years with all original conditions carried forward, we have a second on that. Second by Matthew Gillis, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Susan. All right, item number five, there's still other public hearings, it's forty-seven North Front Street. Special permit, amendment to convert two apartments into one more occupied residence. Section block five is forty-eight point three hundred fourteen dash two dash ten. Secret determination zone C2 to the Big Stew's Overlake District, also the Stocky Historic District. Ward two, a period of four, this is the advocate owner.
I don't either. So, the line to table it, or just
You wanna just hold off, see if you choose?
It's just two apartments, she's actually family in them, so she can convert
That's the same thing.
The owner of the time, and
It was a hotel.
She had that short term, she had two properties, she had several of them. So, in nine or two years, one.
Okay. Ready for that? Sound good? Yeah. Another secret, this is a listed action, so we have to do determination of environmental significance. I have before me a short environmental assessment form. That is in order. This time a motion that we approve, we have a second. Second by Chuck Malacco, all in favor? Opposed? Carry.
This is number?
She has the best of the issue. All right, this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number five for a period of two years. As long as the business does not change ownership. And while the original condition is carried forward from the original approval, as a motion, I have a second. Second by Chuck Malacco, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, item number six, still in public hearings. One eighty-seven dash one eighty-nine Beale Street. Special prepared renewal over residential care slash assisted clinic facility. Section block five is forty-eight point three hundred eighteen dash six dash twenty-two. Secret determination zone R2, Ward five, Haley Woodstock is the advocate owner. Is there anybody besides the advocate or owner wishing to speak on item number six? Close the public hearing on item number six. Welcome Michael Burden to the table.
Hello, sir. Good evening. Big question, where does any tax affect exchange?
No, not really, mainly the government for a whole part of the day. The program is actually recognized as part of the national study to evaluate the effectiveness of transitional improvements.
All right, we are bound by an order, we can't go past that, so we'll see you every year here, okay?
Yeah, we know.
Okay. Stan, have anything? Jumping on? The rest is good? Right. Under secret, this is also a type two action, so no further review of the words required. This time we'll make a motion that we approve item number six for a period of one year with all the original conditions carried forward, we have a second on that. Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. You gonna stay right here, same? Okay, looking on to item number seven. This is thirty eighty-five Thomas Street. Special prepared renewal for emergency shelter use. Section block five is fifty-six point twenty-five dash four dash twenty-four. Secret determination zone O three is Ward five, Haley Woodstock again is the advocate owner. Anybody besides advocate or owner wishing to speak on item number seven? Okay, close the public hearing on item number seven. Welcome back Michael Burden to the microphone. Have you ever been to the same? There's one there. Thank you.
Yeah, how does, how does the bridge work?
Oh, well, you know, it's unfortunate. I have to say, I know at this point you closed it three, four months before you were prepared to do it, but you know, people are getting there. I mean, the shelters are full, so somehow they're managed to get past the bridge. No, it would be nice if it was done, and I know they're working on it. But, hey. It needs a job to go around. Definitely, it's all right.
Anybody have any questions to this? All right, again, under secret, this is a type two action. Excuse it, no further review of the words required. And this time we'll make a motion that we approve item number seven. Again, we are bound by an order, we can't go past that, so we'll see you every year here, okay?
Yeah, we know.
Okay. Stan, have anything? Jumping on? Good. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Michael Burden. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number eight, one seventy-seven and one seventy-nine Henry Street. Block five, Malaysia lands of Edmund and Janet Hurd. Section block five is fifty-six point one hundred eight dash two dash eighteen and fifty-six point one hundred eight. That's the same line. The one next door. Okay. Good one? Alright, um, it's in, uh, zone O2, ward five, Edmund and Janet Hurd are the applicant owners. Anybody besides, uh, the owners who are, want to speak on item number eight? Close the public hearing on item number eight. Are the Burrs here? Oh, I'm sorry.
It ends in a seventeen and an eighteen.
Come on forward, come on round to the round, sorry. Alright, that second property is 56.108-2-17. Right. Can you state your names to the director, please?
Okay, Janet, last name Hurd.
Okay.
Officer Tracy Hurd.
Welcome. So... We're putting two properties in the same one?
Right.
So I'm going to each set up. We have lots of acts in the day. Alright. Okay, um, another secret, it's a type two action. So we'll have to render a, this environmental significance determination I had before the issue of environmental assessment form. That is an order. I make a motion that we approve by a second. Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. And... Alright, so this time I'll make a motion that we approve by number eight. With board policy six, um, will need to be signed by the owner. This whole thing's been probably been instructed already, and staff, but right here. And, uh, sign copies of the pass need to be submitted as well, so... So that's a motion. Second? Second by Will Shiger, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you, folks. Great. Have a good evening. Okay, final item in the public hearings. Stand by. It is 101 Green Palatino. Special permit renewal for seven artists blocks. Section block lot is 56.109-2-41. Secret determination, zone O2, ward four. Greenfield Management Group is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant owner who wishes to speak on item number nine? Okay, close the public hearing on item nine, come on, yeah, come on, ready? You, you must be Lisa.
Yes.
Okay. And you are the owner's representative?
Yes.
Any changes to what's going on here, though?
No.
Just...
Yes.
Any questions over here? These is good.
She hasn't emailed me.
Okay, cause I know I talked to her about it. Um, so she did come and talk to her.
Yeah. She had left you a little bit. She was there, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Fire, fire flood lights, fire science, et cetera. Um, we were in a good shape. A couple of covers for wires, things like that, but, um, see if I can get a list.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had it taken care of. My apologies, thank you, Robert. So we made that additional approval. And, uh, the, the, the term for that of the goal, we want to go, the last referral was for three years. What was the board feel about that? Three again? Alright. So, another secret, this is a type two action. Uh, no further review of the board's require for that. This is my little commotion that we approve by number nine for a period of three years. Um, and the applicant, the owner applicant will have to clear out the issues of building safety. If that would be a warrant, that'll be an additional approval and... So, fifty, thirty days?
Finally, uh, received the letter from the...
Yeah, okay.
That's acceptable, Tom, thirty days? Okay. Tom, chaos, I guess. Alright, and we have all the original conditions carried forward, so, uh, as a motion, go ahead and second. Second by Matt Gillis, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Right, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Thanks, good job.
Okay, moving on to the new business, site number ten. 41 Wall Street. Site plan to establish a fourteen room motel. Section block lot is 48.331-6-11. Secret determination, zone O2, Fair Street Historic District. It's also the heritage area. Ward two, Hudson Valley Development Keystone is the applicant owner. At the record show, that's Scott Dunn, he's here, welcome.
Good evening. Recognize Kyle, I think it'd be the perfect time slot to arrive. Thank you. You are, okay.
Alright, so this building has cross street from Baptist Church, right on Fair Street, for a, for a, for a... There we are.
Um, yes, okay. Formerly owned by a lordy. Proposal is for a fourteen room boutique inn. This is in conjunction with the upper area 301 Wall Street, same developer, same active house. So these are just additional rooms offered at a different location. Situation is not unlike, if you're familiar with the beat in Arkansas, with the Delma Island and Montecito, they're multiple locations, but they're all operated under a single ownership and, uh, single sample services. The building is being placed on the national register. We're ninety-nine, ninety-nine, ninety-nine percent sure that National Park Service will accept our application. Um, our ones that appear and all indications are that it's an easy layup. Parking for this property will be provided at 273 Wall Street, which is the Citizens Bank. Same to all that recently wired that property, and it's a abundance of parking in the rear. I just recently got the survey map for that property. And I'm a, I hope, staff, the, the evidence that there is sufficient market to meet the demand for that property and this property. And we don't have any concerns about being able to demonstrate that. There are no exterior improvements proposed, other than a very small addition on the top floor on the north side. You look to... To appropriate elevation here. We reference sheet A or five in comparison to A10. You'll see that there's a flat roof section on the northeast corner of the, the building from a later addition. And by simply filling in the M-Star at that level to complete the roof line, you can sneak the last, uh, front stair required via a second emergency vehicle still. So that's the only exterior modifications proposed. Recommissions, essential services, all of that will be new, like 301, private owner, remove daily. No elevator. No elevator is not required in, in this building. It is exempt. Not getting too far into the weeds with the building, the historic structure is part of it. Being able to provide equivalent opportunities and, uh, to the same hotel operator in that location. There's just, uh, on this. And I should add, the board does, does not, um, we have been before this only board revealed we were granted the necessary arrangements because of this, and the parking as well. One of the conditions of the waiver for parking was that we provide a roof line offsite parking in another location and that, uh, that we provide the opportunity for valet parking. And we clarified that that meeting did not mean that there had to be a valet on twenty-four seven, but that we would have that opportunity for folks to, to not have to, uh, to walk fifty hundred blocks at, at times in the, so, it would be...
And besides the major change and possible problems, I need to, that everybody else remains the same with the buildings.
Correct, um, the, the developer has yet to settle on name. Therefore, the I D sign, the, the, the assumption is that we will have to come back around, probably hit all of the sites at the same meeting once the logo is settled on. Sort of a mass renewal, I, for all the facilities developed.
So this, citizen, pardon, citizen, this building, and so, building back.
I, I will, I will be able to demonstrate that as a new step.
Uh, you drive through this building, service, that's back where it was in the cabinet house?
Yeah.
That is, um, not been in operation for at least four, five years. I'm saying, it was...
Please speak into the mic. You can't hear your questions.
Any other, any question, anything that's associated with this?
No, just rooms.
Okay.
There's a small, um, table at the northeast corner, I think on the second or third floor, where there's an honor bar, or it might be office in the morning, press water, water, pressure, something like that. The, the property was originally a single family home. Uh, it lays out very easily for the, the hotel suites. Tremendous amount of, uh, reconfiguring. I mean, there would be a substantial amount of renovations needed. Not to wiring, uh, single electric, uh, for the HVAC, uh, the dual home, O2, or three fronts.
Yeah, this is, this is a preliminary presentation by the applicant. Uh, so we're going to be, uh, referred to, uh, referred to the county. This is sort of a theory. So, uh, the county legal, the commission and the, and our commission. So, uh, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number ten, go ahead and second on that. Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
You're welcome to eat the drawing, so if you can pause and I'll take you back. And, uh, on the way out the door.
Uh, I can wonder, I think...
Sorry. Uh, we've been dealing 609, 611 Broadway for the last four... Let me introduce this to the record first, or... Alright, let me just introduce this first, Scott. Uh, we're going to item number eleven, which is a rural business. 609 Broadway, it's a special permit to renovate an existing building with ground for commercial in eight residential units above. Section block lot is 56.109-3-17. Secret determination, zone C2, mixing Zolay District, Broadway Overlay District. It's award for LA 609 Broadway is the applicant owner. Scott Dunn is here to discuss this. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, just a real quick update. Um, we are getting that building, making application to National Park Service in here to ship over, you mentioned it personally on site. Um, we've made the case, the earth's case, here, the law has, has said that it is eligible. Uh, previously, they had it in their files as not being eligible. And that's just from a random drive by survey that was done years ago. Uh, so they're convinced that they're winning the championship, and they're almost in the National Park Service. So we will be coming back next month to try and round out the load of such, like, videos. I just wanted everyone to know that it's still alive, still the same program.
This is just a facility, everybody, this is the building next to the former Gage.
Okay, very good. There were eleven very unseasoned apartments in there, and we're looking to do eight. Um, very nice market rent, compared to what it was.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, so. At this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number eleven, go ahead and second. Second by Mary Jo, all in favor? Opposed? Carry.